All right, are you ready?
Ready. Welcome, everybody, as we're filtering into the meeting room here. Um, we're going to give it a couple of minutes as we get everybody kind of funneled in here on a Tuesday at two o'clock. Uh, really excited for the program and agenda we got going on today. All right, I'm gonna do a quick screen share here and we'll kick off the, uh, the program. Okay, well, as we let everybody come in, I'll give a quick update on Naturally San Diego and what we have going on. And then we'll introduce the, the, the great individuals we have participating today on the, on the panel. Um, so for those that are new to Naturally San Diego, uh, one, we thank you. And two, just a quick backstory, um, this organization is about three years old. Um, and it really started in the middle of COVID with this desire to build a more cohesive, connected natural foods community in San Diego. And, uh, the response has been overwhelming and it's been just a true pleasure and a joy to, uh, help build this community. So, um, we have, I think, one of the most robust natural foods community in San Diego. And our organization reflects that. So we're about 600 members strong in San Diego. And, uh, this is an organization that is led by the brands, uh, as you can see on this sheet here, we have over a hundred brands in our community. And, uh, one thing that I always, uh, it brings a smile to my face and for anybody that knows me and meets me at these events, they know that I am the, uh, uh, beating the drum of how great San Diego is to build a, uh, consumer goods business. So we have big scaled brands from Perfect Snacks to, um, Chihuahua and Chosen and Bitchin'. And then we also have emerging brands. So the ecosystem couldn't be more, I think, robust here. And we just have an amazing community outside of the brands. We have incredible, you know, kind of tier one sponsors like Bank of America and Chase and Luminize. That's just helping build a really robust ecosystem here. And really none of this is possible without this kind of, I would say this cult of brands that are helping build a greater food and beverage, uh, in consumer goods community here in San Diego. So before we start, I just want to say thank you to all of our partners and sponsors. And you can see on this list, it's a really, it's a long list. We can't say, we can't name all of them, but a, a, a real honor and thank you for helping support this community. Um, and to that, if you aren't sure to be involved, you can go to naturally sandiego.com and you can find, uh, more information on our website. The one event we do have coming up soon is we'll be having a fall happy or a Christmas happy hour in, uh, middle of December. We'll send out information on that. It's always a good time, uh, a time to kind of relax and unwind as we gear up for 2024. So please join that. And again, thank you to all of our sponsors. Okay, so today, uh, I'm joined with, um, four, uh, really, really smart individuals that I hold in high esteem and I've known for a long time. Uh, we have Kiva from Selva Ventures, uh, Dayton from Boulder Food Group, Nick Mendel from Amberstone. And then Jack Peterson from Bank of America. Um, these individuals will help us set the stage for our conversation today, which is going to be mainly about what is the world adventure capital and what does the market look like for consumer food and beverage? As we start to plan for 2024 and we start to somehow get some relief from what has been a pretty wild last three years. Uh, so today we'll, we'll do really just a conversation, uh, around, uh, the outlook for the year and what that looks like. Um, we start just to cancel my screen share. So here we are. We have all the folks here. So, um, before we dive in, um, you know, you just want to go on the horn here and if you guys can all introduce yourselves. So Kiva, if we could start with you, you want to give a quick introduction and then you can pass it off to the next person.
Hey y'all, um, Kiva Dickinson from Selva Ventures. Uh, we're about a four-year-old firm. We manage about $50 million in capital focused exclusively on seed and series A consumer products companies that help consumers live healthier lives. So we've been involved in, uh, a number of brands over the past four, four years, a couple with other folks on this call, but um, Mudwater, Midday Squares, Shirley Wines, uh, to name a few.
Nick, you want to go?
Sure. Um, Nick Mendel, uh, founding partner of Amberstone, um, been investing and advising in the consumer space for the last 15 years. Uh, and most recently at Amberstone, um, investing in, uh, I would say series A and series B, so five to 15 million dollar checks. And, uh, fast moving consumer goods is how we define it. Um, have partnered with uh, Junshine out of San Diego, Partake Brewing, uh, Mush, um, Cleveland Kitchen and Joby, uh, to name a few here.
Dayton?
Well, I'm, uh, I'm Dayton. I'm up in, uh, Los Angeles. I'm with, uh, BFC Partners. Uh, we, uh, have, uh, managing around 200 million, a little over 200 million, um, in, in assets today. Uh, focused on the same, same areas, kind of food, beverage, consumer products. Um, I think the one, one area where we also focus is in ecosystem, uh, business services. So, um, some of you might be familiar with, uh, Greenspoon Sales, which is a, is an offline brokerage firm as well as Cartograph, which supports, um, Amazon and Stay, which, uh, supports direct consumer. Um, in addition to that, in the, in the kind of CPG world, uh, we're investors in Ali Pop, Bobos, Cali Power, um, brands like that.
Great. Thank you, Dayton. Jack?
Hey everyone, Jack Peterson. I'm, uh, senior vice president with Bank of Amer- America here in San Diego. I cover the middle market space. So the next stage after kind of what I consider entrepreneurial or venture sized businesses, our universe is companies with 50 million in revenues and north. Um, I spend a lot of time in the CPG food space, um, deal with companies like Chosen Foods, sponsor of the organization. Ollie, Silla Maria, I also do some large produce distributors, um, food distributors, uh, avocados, specialty produce. You see the trucks driving around town. Um, but forward to talk with that run.
Great, thank you. Um, well, excellent guys. Um, I had to give a shout out to Dayton because for folks that know me, uh, I knew nothing about the consumer goods business before I met Dayton and they invested in our first business. And so uh, I have a propensity to want to promote Boulder Food Group, but couldn't say better things about them as people and humans. So Dayton, I always appreciate you and thank you for joining in here. The same with Kiva and Nick and Jack. I appreciate you guys. Uh, just to set the stage, uh, question that's been, you know, just on the top of mind. Um, in Q4 2021, there was about, uh, 600 deals done in venture capital. And then in Q2 of 2023, there was, uh, just south of 100. So uh, a six X reduction, uh, in the volume of deals. Um, you know, Kiva, I'll start with you. What do you think's driving that as you're in the driver's seat of deploying capital? Uh, what's made your job harder than it was a year and a half ago?
I would probably answer the question not as in what has made my job harder is, is what are the two macro forces that have led to a reduction in deals? That I think the first one is there are fewer people or groups investing in consumer products. That could be, uh, angel investors who are feeling flush in 2021, aren't, aren't feeling the same way. That could be VC firms that were investing in, you know, the, the DTC-ification of all things consumer that have pulled back. It could be family offices that were, that were dabbling that are pulling back, but there are fewer investors investing in this space. That's one. And then two is the specialists who invest in this space, you know, namely like the folks on this call and, and, you know, some of our peers, I think have had every incentive in the world to slow down our investment pace. We don't want to go out to the financing markets as quickly. We don't want to, for our own fundraising, that is to say, uh, we don't want to, um, we don't want to jump too soon before we know where the new goalposts sit in terms of valuation metrics. And I think all of that has just encouraged us to be patient.
That's a really good insight from your, from your point of view, because the entrepreneurs are seeing it only from how do I get my business funded, right? Um, on that goalpost, uh, comment, where do you guys think the goalpost is? Is it moving at the same speed? Is it slowing? Is it accelerating your idea of the goalpost? I guess I'll ask that to Nick. Yeah, just like, where do you guys think the goalpost is? And you guys are trying to right side, start deploying capital and it's a moving goalpost. Is that a slowing goalpost or an accelerating goalpost as we sit today?
I mean, from my perspective, the goalposts have never entirely changed and, and that's, that might be a little bit unique to Amberstone and that from the outset of founding ourselves, we've been hyper focused on margin and velocity and capital efficiency. And I think to keep his point, a lot of tourist capital left the space and that was a driver of the goalposts and more often than not, we ended up missing deals because we weren't willing to reach and we weren't willing to move from what our North Stars were. And now I think we're starting to see a, I would say a normalization within the industry around building real brands and building enduring businesses that have strong fundamentals underneath them. And I think that's bringing the goalposts back to a more, a more realistic version of what investing should look like.
Dayton, any thoughts there?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I, I think that's all, I, I agree with both Kiva and, and Nick. I think, um, uh, at, at least from our side, like, um, I guess we were, we were in market, uh, selling a, a business in, in 2020 and then, uh, which was Birch Benders. And then we sold another business uh, in 2022, which was a haircare business called Curl Smith. And, um, you know, on both of those, uh, you know, we were just kind of seeing how strategics were, were thinking about valuing these businesses, namely, uh, 15 to 20-ish times EBITDA and, um, uh, and you know, it's, it's hard to, uh, to, to, to buy into a revenue multiple and sell it in EBITDA multiple. You gotta really be right. Um, and, uh, and, and so, you know, that, that was one of the reasons why, um, you know, we really kind of pulled back in the last few years, I think. Um, the, just, just kind of seeing eye to eye, uh, with, with, with folks who are, who are raising, um, and just having that certainty and, and what seems like an environment that just, you know, what, what's going to be the next shoe to drop, whether it's, you know, hyperinflation or supply chain shortages or war or whatever. Um, so, uh, so there's a lot of, um, a lot of variables and, uh, and just kind of prices that people were, were, you know, the market was paying, um, uh, on, on the buy-in, we're, we're forcing you to kind of be even more, um, calculated in your, in your risk assessment.
So it's really interesting. You, you brought up, uh, revenue and EBITDA Dayton, and I would love for you guys to expand on this is, you know, I think early-stage entrepreneurs are always trying to optimize their business for, to be in the best position, uh, to create liquidity for anybody on the cap table. Uh, you mentioned 15 times revenue, which really equate to about,
EBITDA.
Oh yeah, I mean, yeah, 15 times EBITDA and which would equate to like, you know, 2.2 times of revenue today, if you're having like a 15% EBITDA margin. So my question for you guys is that, what is the best EBITDA margin you've seen in all of your portfolio companies? Just so entrepreneurs get an idea of what realistic is here.
Forty, forty percent.
Wow.
That's the best.
Yeah. Dare I ask, what's the worst?
Negative 20. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
More than that.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty, positive 20 is the best that, that we've seen, but I'll caveat that that's like, we, we invest. The average company in our portfolio is probably smaller than the average company in Dayton's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
Yeah. And then how, how about, you know, I get this question 10 times from Sunday. Gross margin, right? Range of gross margins. Obviously every business is different because that's trade spending there. But if you guys can give the entrepreneurs operating this space a range of gross margins to be targeting.
I mean, I think it's all vertical dependent, uh, within food and beverage. I think you need to be aiming for a minimum with freight out included. Somewhere between 30 and 35% at minimum, um, probably within beauty. You're talking north of 70%, personal care, 50 to 60%. Um, so I think it's all just kind of where your company is and what's appropriate for each vertical, but that's generally kind of what we're seeing.
It's maybe, it's maybe worth commenting on like where we see early-stage entrepreneurs get the gross margin question wrong because they think that we're just like typing into a set of benchmarks and evaluating them. Like we, we really care one about what's acquirable. That's to say like, you know, time of investment plus four to eight years, where will you be one day? And there tends to be a view from many entrepreneurs that scale will solve this problem. And I will like die on the hill that it won't unless there's like a very specific, you know, co-packer minimum that you're going to hit in this year that's going to transformationally change it. I would, I would probably say that like both cost inflation on inputs and, uh, price compression in the future retailers that you're going to need to sell to means that your gross margin just isn't going to change very much. And then the second thing that we really care about, and this is like even more so in the last couple of years, as capitals become tighter, is just the lower your gross margin, the more diluted we're going to get, the more times you're going to have to tap the capital markets. And every single time you tap the capital markets, we lose sleep because your company might die. And so if, if you are higher gross margin, more efficient, you control your destiny more. And therefore we feel more comfortable. I like to say, you're trying to get from here to here. You can go all like this. You don't have to go like this, but if you have a gross margin that's quite low and you have to tap the capital markets every 12 to 18 months, you have to go linear and probably anyone on this call who's an entrepreneur knows that it's never linear.
Yeah, and you know, such a good point, Kiva, because it also is conducive to, if you have gross margin, you leave more room for mistakes and there will be mistakes. There's going to be bumps in the road, hence your analogy, right? And the lower your gross margin, the less wiggle room you have for those mistakes to be able to be really impactful.
Yeah. I mean, maybe just kind of build on Kiva's point. I think like probably for this audience, which is, which is mostly earlier-stage companies, I'd just really be focused on unit economics and kind of what does that look like, um, both on, you know, every product you're selling. Um, I think that, that's the story I would, I would focus on. Um, and then really what is maybe your contribution to margins? So, um, which is kind of all your variable expenses, including selling expenses as well. Uh, maybe customer acquisition costs is, uh, if you're a digitally native business, but, um, uh, you know, you can tell a good story. I mean, I don't think typically when we're getting involved with businesses, I mean, occasionally they're profitable, but more often than not, they're not. Um, and then it's just a matter of kind of how comfortable are you with the burn relative to the other metrics of the business? Um, whether it's the growth or, and then the next point, it varies dramatically by category. I don't, I don't think the same strategy works for every category. And
Yeah.
there's, there's some losses that will literally make you nauseous for years and then, uh, it turns and it's, it's an amazing thing to see.
You know, you said, build on that Dayton, you know, you guys talked about, you know, controlling your destiny with, by showing EBITDA. And I think this conversation has been happening across the industry with brands getting, doing their best to get fit and get profitable as soon as possible. Um, obviously sometimes that comes at picking the right retailers and getting really good revenue instead of just kind of growth revenue. Have you guys seen an average across your portfolio come down to what is the new expectations of revenue growth? Obviously this is hard because every brand's different, every channel's different. But are you guys happy with a 20, 30, 40% growth for a company that has good solid revenue, good unit economics in this market?
Depends on category, but, and, and kind of stage, but, um, yeah, I think, and, and where is the growth coming from, right? If that's, uh, mostly same, same retailers, uh, and they're, you know, building a community around it. Um, you know, for early stage, that's probably on like the lower end, the 20 to 30%. Um, but you know, once you're upscale and, um, you know, even a few years from exit, if you're kind of continuously showing like 30% growth and you're getting into nine figures and then, and then some, I think that's really attractive if you're managing the bottom line well as well. Um, so, you know, like I think it depends, I guess.
Yeah. Any thoughts there, Nick and Kiva?
Yeah, I mean, I always do an analysis of where the growth is coming from, uh, whether that's coming from distribution or velocity. And I think Dayton touched on it, but you know, if your growth is coming through velocity gains and you're, you're averaging 20 to 30% year over year and you're at scale, that's incredibly strong. Um, and then, you know, certainly as some of the younger brands, I think being mindful of balancing how to go deep with existing retailers and maintain or improve your philosophy while also gaining new points of distribution is a very compelling story to be able to tell to investors as well.
Yeah, super interesting. Jack, I want to go to you for a second here. If you can kind of set the stage, you know, obviously Nick, Kiva, Dayton, you know, look at their business as what their investors are willing to invest in risky assets and in an asset class and you know, their investors, these large LPs are highly influenced by interest rates, I imagine. Where is Bank of America's head on some of the lending you guys do? And then how are interest rates affecting this broader market? And where do you guys see things kind of going forward?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Um, I think our story is, is that the capital market story and when I'm describing capital markets, I'm talking about large lending relationships. It's all flowing downhill and there's a lot more, uh, selectivity. Um, banks are struggling with the SVB fallout. There's been a lot of regulation that's trickled down through the super regionals and regional banks that, um, large banks have already had to exist under, and that's put a pretty big shockwave into the system and you're seeing that translate into higher interest rates as, as, as bank lending margins have been compressed. So you have to, you have to have a higher interest rate to, to hurdle that, um, that return. Uh, so that is something that is putting upward pressure. Plus you had the Fed that's, it's raised rates, you know, at an unprecedented rate this year. Um, and now you're in, uh, a, a very unstable geopolitical environment, which is, uh, putting further upward pressure on rates. Um, I think the the general belief is that we're at a higher for longer state. Um, and interestingly, I mean, in this, this last week, there's been a lot of, um, there's been a lot of talking heads and a lot of major bond investors that have really covered their short positions on bonds, meaning they think that there's going to be a dramatic, uh, whipsaw of investors buying, uh, treasury yields and, and pushing down interest rates next year, given that there might be a, a flight from, you know, what's going on in the world to safety. So I think as far as the outlook, um, I saw this morning, Jamie Dimon, CEO of, of, uh, JP Morgan, he, he came out and said, you know, you can see Fed funds at 7% next year. Really the market dynamics are so, um, there's so many things affecting it right now. It's, it's hard to say. What, what I do think is that the Fed's that at the end of its tightening uh, cycle, but that doesn't mean that rates aren't, are, are going to come down naturally. I think they're at the end of their tightening cycle because you've had so many market dynamics that have pushed rates, rates up. So I think if you're a business owner, um, we're advising our, our borrowers to, to prepare for an elevated, a period of elevated interest rates. Um, and I would be planning to operate your business at that. We've seen, we've, we've seen that across the board.
I guess that's a really good transition to, you know, the folks are deploying capital, Kiva, Dayton and Nick. How much of your guys' portfolio actually has, you know, venture debt or some debt? And is that a risk to the portfolio as you guys see it? Um, where's your heads on that? To, to brands that are merging, growing with debt or not debt, right? Like if, if your brand doesn't have debt, do you take it or not? You know, where, where you guys land on that for your portfolio?
In general, we have very little debt across the portfolio. Uh, I think, I can think of two businesses that have equipment, uh, loans. Um, uh, then actually three, um, uh, but then beyond that, let's say the vast majority of our businesses have, uh, working capital facilities. Um, uh, but, but to kind of Jack's point, uh, five years ago, like a working capital facility might cost you eight or nine percent. Now they're 12 to 14%. Um, you know, because the risk-free rate went from, you know, effective was zero to five and a half. So just add five to kind of everything. Um, uh, you know, I, I think thankfully, uh, I, I do think there's a lot of tailwinds in our industry overall. Um, I think, uh, there, there's generally not a lot of debt at this, uh, stage. Um, but, uh, so, so maybe operationally, uh, interest rates aren't like a huge impact outside of just a, a bit more to, to pay for working capital. Um, I do think on the buyer side, uh, both the number of buyers, meaning private equity is, is, you know, effectively not showing up a lot of times.
Yeah.
And then, um, the, just how much they're willing to pay, um, are, are two big, um, uh, negatives for, for the interest rate environment for us.
Just to expand on that Dayton, you, you, you're saying that relative to, you know, circa a year and a half ago, private equity, financial buyers would be showing at the table that would help provide a more dynamic bidding environment for an M and A, but now they're not. And do the strategics know that?
I don't know. We haven't been in a process in a while, but like, uh, you know, you're, from my friends in later-stage private equity, or you're just not able to get nearly as much debt. And so the more equity you have to put into a business on the, on the LPO side, you're, um, uh, the lower your, the, your equity returns because you're just not able to juice them with, with cutting. So I think return expectations are kind of coming down. Um, uh, you know, hopefully that's a good thing in terms of our broader LP base, I guess, in terms of our asset class, but, um,
Yeah.
but yeah, we, we, we haven't seen it, well, um, in, in real life. Yeah.
Yeah. Nick Eva, any thoughts on that?
I mean, we have, as Dayton said, we have very little debt in our portfolio. Um, we have a few lines out with one bank in particular that has been a phenomenal partner for us and it's still sub nine percent on all-in interest, uh, for nine to $10 million lines of credit. And so it's a relationship that we've built. And I think when it comes to putting debt into your business, it's just being thoughtful about how you do it, um, what the risk reward profile looks like for layering debt into a business and understanding what your cash flow dynamics look like to be able to support that. Um, and what, you know, again, our debt is a, a facility that changes over time based on trailing three months revenue. And so just being hyper-aware of what that does to you and what, um, what that model looks like and being able to service that debt or pay it back over time when that borrowing base inevitably does change, I think is important, but, um, we're, we're not kind of dealing with a lot of the interest rate environment right now.
Changing gears a, a little bit for you guys, um, you know, we talked about deal volume. Um, when you guys look at your portfolio today and you look at, you know, adding new companies to your portfolio, how would you think about what the activities did in 23 relative to what you expect to do in 24? Are you optimistic? Are you same as 23? You know, I think all your portfolios are different. So I would love your guys' opinions. Kiva, we'll start with you.
I think we decided at the beginning of this year to raise the bar of conviction that we needed to deploy capital into any single new company and spend more time on two things. The first being our portfolio, supporting them, helping them think through the operating environment, the capital markets challenges, everything that was going on. And in many cases, these portfolio companies have been, you know, much more eager to accept that help and, and have these conversations with us than they have in the past. And so that has been, that has been time well spent. Uh, I think the second thing that we have found, and, and this relates to something Nick said earlier around, around tourist investors, tourist capital leaving the industry. There's fewer investors now deploying into the companies that were really, or trying to deploy capital into the companies we're really excited about. And what that means for us is we are a lot less focused on short-fused fundraises that are really competitive and a lot more focused on building what we think is like the dream portfolio, the wish list of, of brands that we would love to partner with, we'd love to invest in, regardless of when they happen to be raising capital and spending more time with those groups in advance and ultimately, you know, building the architecture of a, of a partnership over, you know, months rather than weeks. And, you know, what that means is, uh, we aren't beholden to a, we're going to do six deals a year, four deals a year or something like that. We, we kind of feel like we know the 15 to 20 companies that we would want to invest in if the time allowed and um, we're ready to do that. And I think there is some removing of adverse selection in that a lot of the brands that are a bit more desperate for capital in this moment. Uh, I, I think. Uh, I I think to many of us are are less attractive targets. Because that is somewhat of a signal of less efficiency, something that investors are really just scared about across the board. So my guess is we'll probably invest faster in twenty four than twenty three because our list will get longer and some of those conversations. Will will become more fertile. Um, but I I I wouldn't say it's a matter of the environment getting better by any means.
It's well said. Nick, anything to add to that, Dayton? Anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean. I'm cautiously optimistic. I mean, there's definitely this push pull. Um, we are in. The work of deploying capital and I think our LPs have some expectation that that capital will be deployed. With that being said, we've always had the advantage of being a concentrated portfolio by design, and so that doesn't force our hand into anything. We know ultimately, at the end of the day, we wanted to play capital into maybe eight to ten brands over the next four years, let's say. Um, and it's just leading to a situation where we can be highly selective. We can make sure we're having brands that fit. The portfolio that we want to build, as as Kiva was saying. And that I would say also, um, it's allowing us to get more creative. I think that there are a number of brands. That over the last three years have demonstrated. An ability to be efficient with their capital, to drive profitable growth and to establish themselves in. Uh, in the categories that they play in. And sometimes those founders haven't had uh any ability to take some liquidity off the table. So I do think that there's been some ability of of us to. Maybe say instead of putting only primary capital to work, we can put some secondary to work to. Uh, augment our position and be able to drive the returns that we expect. Um, so I think that there's been more off market work. Uh, more relationship building and more creativity around the types of deals that we're willing to get into than there was in the past. And we remain cautiously optimistic, probably doing. Maybe one deal before the year is out and then I would say, you know. Two deals in twenty twenty four, but that's that's more of a function of being concentrated in our approach.
Yeah. Dayton, you have a little bigger fund. Tell how many deals you're going to do next year.
Uh, well, uh, probably a good number, believe it or not. I think, um.
Yeah.
I was just looking up at like our kind of uh capital called in capital returns since inception and. Uh, in twenty twenty three, we actually deployed more capital than we did in twenty twenty two, more capital than we did in twenty twenty one. Um, but less than we did in in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So, um, you know, reasonably active, given kind of all the doom and gloom.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you know, I think uh, uh, we 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 um are very opportunistic. I think we. Um, you know, we we funded a handful of things pre-revenue. Um, uh, you know, our first investment in the Holly Pop is only at eighty seven thousand dollars of uh of annual revenue in. Um, twenty eighteen. So, uh, you know, we'll we'll get in early. We just kind of scale the check uh accordingly. Um, uh, and uh, if anything, I I think, you know, we've been certainly very active in in that part of the portfolio. Um, uh, this year and I anticipate that continuing to um be the case next year and then. You know, we'll do really late stage things. Um, uh, so you know, ju- just like like Nicholas saying, whether that's a a chance to do some secondary. For some businesses that we really know and really like, or maybe there's um a bridge to an exit that has some interesting structure on it. Um, you know, try to be a good partner once we're inside the business.
Eva, you and I run a run, I think, like seven or eight months ago, and you were saying, hey, it seems like the only category that has legs now is pet. Um, maybe you didn't say it that way. I kind of rephrased your words because of the the legs and the pets, but. Um, are there any categories you guys are seeing like beauty, pet? You know, I I think it was pretty dark. It reads to like consumer packaged food. Right? It was a pretty kind of big pause during Expo West. Are there. Categorical bright spots, you know, you know, Kiva, you posted today around you'll die on the hill of uh non-alk beverage, right? So uh, anything to expand on there?
Definitely wasn't that negative when I said that, but may maybe I was just getting breathing heavy from the run. Uh, I think, I think the. The fears on food are real across all of us. Uh, uh, that that is not to say that something special is not investable. I I I think there are really good opportunities. But I I think there's, I think there's worry of uh, some of the businesses that are just aren't able to get gross margin up high enough. Uh, and you know, that that has played out across a number of. The portfolios of of venture and growth firms over the past few years and people, people learn lessons the hard way and are probably a little bit wary of jumping back into those pools. Um, I think beauty and personal care, vitamins and supplements both check the boxes of. Uh, if done right, high gross margin, high repeat purchase, which is ultimately what we're all looking for. And so I I think. Think a lot of the folks that uh. That invest in these spaces as a whole have probably spent a little bit more time in those spaces as before. Uh, and then, you know, frankly. I think pet is really interesting and has always been really interesting for a whole bunch of categorical dynamics. Like I think anytime. A a customer and consumer are different and the customer cares deeply about the consumer. That's to say, I buy food for my cat, I buy toys for my cat, I buy litter for my cat. We're gonna have a baby, hopefully within like a week, I'll buy food for the baby, toys for the baby, have already been buying an insane amount of things for this baby. Like the amount of spend that has gone into that has kind of made my stomach churn. And uh, I'm a lot less price sensitive for the baby than I am for myself. And so in any of those spaces, that I think, I think there's, I think there's just really interesting. Opportunity for innovation, uh, early adopting customers willing to spend a meaningful amount. One question I often ask myself in these categories where where uh, there's a lot of spend. Is where are there places where you're continuously spending every month? A a pretty significant amount of money without loving what you buy. Uh, there's a good opportunity for a CPG brand. And so uh, I just think, you know, pet owners, parents of of human children across the board. Uh, are just filled with all these pain points in their lives that still haven't been solved. And that's why I believe that like. During this time, we and and many of our peers have been looking into pet, looking into. To, you know, baby and and children as as places that there could be, you know, more updating in the health and wellness revolution.
So it's a really interesting thesis, not to, you know, add to the rumor mill here, but I I did hear that. Purina might be exiting the natural organic pet food space with, I'm not sure if you've heard this, uh. But uh, could be your rumor mill completely. Anything on that?
I haven't heard.
We heard it here first, folks. No.
It only gets worse, by the way, the uh, the spend on kids. So. Good luck.
Yeah.
I can imagine.
Yeah, he'll be making investments in baby food companies before you know it. Um, we do have some questions in the chat room that I would like to bring up, uh, one from one of our members, Adam. He's asked a question around. Uh, uh, this is a general question, so take it how you guys want. Uh, you know, asset light or asset uh heavy, meaning co-man, no co-man. Obviously, it can go a lot of ways here, but maybe you guys can speak from specifics of your portfolio of brands that have. You know, Nicholas, I know you guys have an op- an operation that runs a manufacturing with Honey Mamas. Um, if you guys can just speak to that broadly, how do you think about it?
Yeah, I mean, Honey Mama's, June Shine, Cleveland Kitchen and Mush within our portfolio all have their own production facilities. Um, you know, I think, I think there's something to be said if you are a smaller brand with. A unique attribute. So I'll I'll speak to June Shine in particular. June Shine, when it first launched. Uh, really was a refrigerated product with a unique way of introducing probiotics into an alcoholic beverage. And over time, that evolved uh to us owning our own facility at the old Ballast Point Brewery in San Diego. Uh, but the product evolved as well. And I think you need to be flexible as your, your business model evolves, as your model evolves, as your. Biz- uh, as your your skews evolve. So June Shine is now a shelf-stable product with probiotics that. Are introduced in a non kind of IP-controlled way. And what that has allowed is for us to think through, okay, we're now at scale. We now know that co-mans across the country can do what we do. And that the cost of running. A facility on our own actually could be more of a burden at this point than it was in the past. And that going into a co-man production facility might be the right choice, but. That only came up when we were past, you know, call it thirty five million in revenue. And so, you know, there's, I think there's always opportunity to reassess. What your business model is and to be flexible around what you're doing and not necessarily be married exclusively into one way of producing a product over time.
It's great.
Yeah, I would maybe just say, uh. If capital is as scarce as it is today.
Yep.
Think about what really makes your business special. And what really makes it defensible. And try to align that with where your capital is going. And so if your capital, or sorry, if if your product is extremely hard to make. And the end result of making it the way that you make it is going to really resonate with the consumer. Which is definitely true with with June Shine, you know, in in. The investment that Dayton and I share together, midday squares, it's definitely the case. Uh, it it does make sense to control that process and quality in-house and keep it from the competition. Uh, I have certainly heard. Companies in the past suggest that bringing their manufacturing in-house would be a way to um. Operate their facility better than the co-packer does or.
Hmm.
Access capacity.
Failed logic.
Or improve gross margins. And and I I would, I would probably say like. Really think hard about that. Think hard about the math. Think hard about spending the time before you consider doing so. Uh, it it will really fundamentally change what you do, what your core competencies are. And oftentimes. If you, if you come to the conclusion that you can't make it without using a co-packer, I would say you haven't opened every possible door.
Yeah, Kiva, one, one thing actually that just came to mind as you were talking. I mean, if you go the route of self-producing your product, you're now running effectively two businesses. You're running a production facility. As one business and you're running the. DPG side branded product where you're selling into wholesale retailers or your distributors as the other side of your business. So. The layer or the the complexity that you get from running a self-manufactured process. Is is fairly exponential as you're layering on a completely separate business.
Yeah, and actually, just to add to that, Nick, because I think it's relevant to one of the San Diego brands that I think is just a hero, an unsung hero in the industry is bitch and sauce. Right? So if anybody's met Star, she's here in San Diego, she's more than willing to talk, but. She self-manufactured the entire way, but she never took a dollar of venture capital and she never had any goals to grow at a hundred, two hundred, three hundred percent. She was happy that she sold an extra jar of bitchin' at the farmer's market, right? So there's a whole different thesis of how she built her business and ended up being a very successful. But I think know what your journey you're on when you take venture capital, right? You can't grow at ten percent a year, right? All right, we have another question from the audience. Dayton, this is addressed towards you specifically. Um, for brands with no sales data, limited sales data at retail. Um, and you're thinking about doing pre-revenue stuff essentially. What gets you excited? How do you, how do you think about that without data?
Uh, yeah, it's a great, great question. I'd say, um, there's no more of an art than a science. Uh, but I can maybe give a couple of examples. One um is a sunscreen business that we invested in pre-revenue called Vacation. Um, they have a very strong brand voice. It has this kind of eighty nostalgia vibe. Um, when we got the pitch deck, uh, it looked like it was like written on a dot matrix printer and. Even the pitch deck was just like trudiform. It was ju- just so crisp and uh, you're just like, wow, this is different. And uh, um, and then it kind of comes down to like, why do we think this team is uniquely capable of capitalizing on. On this opportunity if we believe in the opportunity. Um, you know, my my partner, Tom, always says like, there's no such thing as a bad idea. There's just bad execution. Um, so these are, these are long-term relationships, um, trying to suss out whether. You kind of see eye to eye in terms of what the appropriate kind of amount of burn or capital spend. Um, it's really about being aligned. I think. Um, you know, you're not going to have all the answers and um, you're uh, you're either going to be pleasantly surprised. Or unpleasantly surprised in terms of how these teams and entrepreneurs ultimately um, react to the challenges. In the in the marketplace. Um, you know, Kiva already mentioned midday squares and uh, when when we first made that investment. By the way, that was a an inbound that came in through LinkedIn. And uh, this this investor in Vancouver was like, you gotta try try these Canadian squares and. Uh, so they sent.
Canadian squares.
And uh, and this was early days. I think they had just launched maybe a month or two ago, uh, prior and um. Uh, and and so, you know, we we fell in love with the product, to be totally honest. And then, and and now, if anything, like we're more in love with the founders. Like they've just been able to carve out such a unique brand voice uh, and and affinity in the in the market. And so they. They well overperformed any expectations that we had on that side. So you're always surprised. Hopefully it's normally for the better. But um, you know, it it it's it's really impossible to know what kind of, how many twists and turns the journey is going to take and. Um, so so hopefully folks just kind of, you know, see eye to eye.
You you know, I just want to add to that, Dayton, because I think it's really important for the entrepreneurs to hear that is. I forget a mentor of mine once told me, but. You know, venture capital's root word is in adventure, right? And so you have to be thinking about that. It's not all going to go right. It is going to be an adventure and there's going to be mistakes. And I think the. The cost of capital in this market of giving up percentage of your business is what the trade is. And when you do have bumps in the road. Share them with your partners because they're on a journey with you. Don't hide them. Okay, I have a um. A kind of outlook question for y'all, um, per se. And I think we could put it in on a positive note here, but just to to preface that. You know, I think today more than ever, we have more public comps than we did as it relates to emerging food and beverage, right? I would say, you know, circa twenties eighteen, twenty seventeen, you know, you had Coke, General Mills, Pepsi, Unilever. And and those never really felt like great comps because you can look at their gross margin and their EBITDA and their, you know, their filings. But now we have brands like Oatley and Laird and. Uh, Beyond Meat and. You know, if I'm an entrepreneur and I'm looking at those public comps, I'm not too positive around what at least the public markets are saying. To the value of these companies, right? Do you guys think about the public comps at all as relates to investing in these stages or is that just noise? Nick, you're like smiling. You can't keep it. Is that what you use when you're negotiating deals? It's like, well, at least value that.
No, no, I think uh. I think a lot of the consumer brands that went public, uh, I think it's just a mistake. Uh, our expectation is that we're never going to see an IPO out of our portfolio, I think. Uh, the dynamics of the world today are such that. You know, if you expect to go public and you're going to be sub two hundred million in market cap, it it just does not worth the cost. Um, and I think that right now there's such a tribalism within consumer where. You know, you have your, I guess there's still a keto tribe or you have your low sugar. Well, I guess that's pretty much across the board, but you know, our whole thesis is that. There's never going to be another Cheerios that appeals to two hundred million Americans. It's. How are you finding brands that appeal to fifteen or twenty million Americans? And with those dynamics, the exit environment around uh, an IPO just. Aren't realistic. You'll end up with a micro cap business that struggles to have any volume on the public markets. And so. You know, we're always like, okay, can we enter into this business at a valuation that if we exited it. You know, two hundred to two fifty would still be a good return for us. And I think that's more of where we believe. Uh, the exit markets are going to look like and that the strategics or private equity world is more where we're going to land with our portfolio than. Uh, than ever having an expectation around public markets.
It's good, it's good perspective. Kiva, Dayton?
We don't really think about it. Same 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 as Nick, we we would uh, be very shocked if any of our businesses go public. Um, and uh, I think it's uh, you know, it's more often a curse than a blessing to be public.
Yeah, I I'm not sure I would say never, but I would say it's probably worth thinking about. When we have these conversations about. Uh, you know, the 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 average retail investor wanting to access what we feel so much excitement about. Which is the dislocation of emerging brands taking share from big companies. There ends up being this this narrative that that piles up that like the big strategics can't do anything. Like they can't, they can't innovate, they can't create these products, losing share like they're helpless fools and they're not. Like they're helpless fools and they're not. They're exceptional manufacturers, distributors.
Yeah.
Large-scale marketers. They're filled with incredibly smart people who just aren't incentivized to be creative and take big swings on things. And so there actually is a really flourishing ecosystem to go prove things at fifty to a hundred and fifty million dollars in sales and pass the baton to them to plug into an organization that can actually optimize for scale. And so if you're choosing to go public instead of selling to one of those big companies, you're effectively saying that you'd rather build your own piping. You'd rather build your army of salespeople, your army of distribution. And there's a point at which it just doesn't fundamentally make sense to do so if there is room for partnership. I think beverage brands who have achieved massive exits uh, have probably shown us the right way to do this. There is eventually the right, you know, scale organization to partner with. Uh, I think food brands are the same. And frankly, if we look at Oatley, Laird, Beyond Meat, et cetera.
Yeah.
I could give an idiosyncratic reason for why each of those things happened during the bull run and why it was silly for it to happen and why you know, the the end prices of all of those businesses kind of make sense.
So it's really, really interesting. I actually have a a closing question for you guys as well on that thread. You know, I think if you look back ten years ago, we had a pretty dynamic, I would say, middle market competitive scaled, like, so you have Chobani, Cliff Bar, Kind. You know, and and these kind of like two hundred to six hundred million dollar businesses are less common now, right? Is that, in your opinion, is that healthy for the ecosystem? Like, it feels like a hollowing out of these privately-run bigger businesses.
I I agree with that. I think it's uh, it's something we've shared a lot as a firm. I think, um, uh, the implications are you you ultimately need to be even bigger to be attractive to a General Mills or something along those lines. Uh, you know, my 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 partner, Tom, sold his last business to Boulder Brands. Uh, it was about thirty million dollar business at the time. Um, and you know, not only is Boulder Brands no longer around, but they, Boulder Brands was bought by Pinnacle. Pinnacle's no longer around. Pinnacle's not part of Canagra. So instead of selling the Boulder Brands, you're now selling the Canagra. Who haven't, I don't think they've done a deal in like four or five years. Um, so it's uh, it's definitely a hollowing out. I like that term. I think, um, it it's also an opportunity. I mean, maybe to to kind of keep this point, maybe there is, um, uh, one or two of these uh, folks has the chance to kind of break out and serve that kind of lower middle market, private ec- or um, public, uh, equity world.
Well, we see that in Celsius right now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's now now like a thirteen or fourteen billion dollar company. But yeah, it's um, it's true. I mean, two years ago, they or whatever it was, they were three.
Yeah.
Or less. So, yeah, true.
This is, this is all so interesting. You know, I could riff with you guys for a long time on this. Um, you know, personally, um, the reason I got into this business was I read Gary Erickson's book, uh, Raising the Bar, and you know, what he built was really inspiring to me. And I guess I want to, you know, leave it on to the entrepreneurs that are returning capital to all their investors. I think that's what we do when we enter this category. But you know, let's build businesses like Cliff Bar. And I actually think that this market in this timing and the patience from the folks here on the other side of the table might enable that over another ten-year horizon. We might build more of those than less of those. Um, and so I appreciate everybody here joining. I can't thank everybody here uh, on the panel enough for participating in this. You guys are absolutely amazing and participate your time back to the community. Um, if anybody wants to reach out, you know, you guys are now all got a chance to interact with Nick, Kiva, Dayton and Jack. So you can reach out to them directly. As you know, Dayton loves doing deals on LinkedIn, so just hit him up and uh, he'll but I appreciate you guys.
We have two partners. I I I'm terrible at LinkedIn messaging. It's funny you even say that, but one time it worked.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're putting their emails in the uh, in the chat there. So again, thank you, guys. Thank you to the Natural San Diego community. Thank you, Jack, Nicholas, Kiva and Dayton. I appreciate you guys so much. And everybody have a terrific week.
Thank you.
Well, alright guys.
Alright, have a good one.